Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the August 13 meeting of the Planning Commission for City of Cupertino. We start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, staff?
Yes, roll call. Commissioner Moore.
Present.
Commissioner Feng.
Present.
Commissioner Takahashi.
Here.
And Chairperson Wong is absent. Vice Chair Saxina?
Yes, present.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes. The subject is draft minutes of July 30, 2019. The recommended action is to approve or modify the draft minutes of July 30, 2019. Fellow Commissioners, do you have any input on the minutes?
Vice Chair, pardon me for one moment. I think Commissioner Moore has a... Yes, yeah.
Due to my involvement in pending litigation, I need to recuse from discussion of the approval of the minutes.
Thank you.
So, I had two comments. The first one, these were related to the text for item three, the Valco GPA. The first one was that the vote in two places was incorrectly recorded as 202 when it should be 220. And then, the other item was, in the last paragraph of the minutes as presented, I didn't feel that that captured the resolution that we agreed on very well. So, I had some proposed alternative text we could discuss, or we could just discuss it. The main part was that the, I believe the key elements of the resolution we passed were related to specification of height limits.
Yes.
And then not recommending to divide the, you know, our recommendation didn't include dividing, subdividing the zone into different areas. So those were not really present. And as I say that, I'm going to go grab my alternative text here.
All right, so those two elements can just be amended to...
Yeah.
...the agenda? Are they on minutes?
Just give me a minute.
City staff, when we have the 202, is Commissioner Feng's interpretation correct, that it should be 220? Okay, thanks.
Yeah, that's correct. We'll make that modification.
And for the motion which carried, we'd only have to, what, 40? We don't say 400? Or, like, towards the end?
Oh, yeah, actually, that's correct, actually. I think it probably should be 400.
Okay.
So, yeah. All right. I'm sorry here, I... So I'd actually, in the spirit of facilitating this, I'd actually sent a request to staff to consider drafting alternate language. And then we had a couple passes going back and forth. So, what I would propose, how should we do this? Is the best way for me to just read it? Okay. So, replacing the... So you would keep the section until Chair Wang closed the public comment period? And then, the replacement text was, "Commissioners discussed providing options for additional residential development within the Valco Shopping District Special Area. Commissioners did not agree that the proposed amendments were necessary at this time. A motion to approve General Plan Amendment GPA 201901 failed to carry 220. Feng and Takahashi voted no. Moore recused. A motion to approve the General Plan Amendment GPA 201902 failed to carry 220. Feng and Takahashi voted no. Moore recused. Because the General Plan Amendments were not recommended, the municipal code amendment and master zoning map amendment to implement the General Plan Amendments were not required." And then, new paragraph. "The planning commissioners..." Let's see. "The planning commissioners discussed height limits across the site and economic feasibility of a project. Moved by Takahashi and seconded by Wong to adopt a draft resolution to," and these are the points, "recommend that city council adopt a proposed general plan amendment solely to establish a height limit of 60 feet for residential use only and 75 feet for residential use above commercial. Second point, within the Valco Shopping District Special Area, and take other such action as appropriate to establish these height limits within the Valco Shopping District Special Area. The second point was subject to economic analysis of the feasibility of development consistent with those general plan amendments," at the next point, "and subject to additional public engagement. Then the final point, and recommend that the city council adopt a second addendum to the environmental impact report for the 2014 general plan amendment, housing element update, and associated rezoning project for the proposed modifications to the project affecting the Valco Shopping District Special Area." The motion carried 400. Moore recused.
Do, Commissioner Takahashi, do you have any comments?
No.
I think these changes are fairly substantial, so we should probably defer the approval to next meetings, or what do you feel?
Either way.
Or maybe we should just go ahead and...
It's probably worthy of having some discussion to consider that part of the reason for this was that the council was intending to take up this item on August 20th. So, and our minutes, our approved minutes would normally be part of that packet.
Okay.
So it's an opportunity to do that.
So, yeah, do you have, can we display the bullet points? Because that'll make it easier for us.
Yeah. Let me download this on my computer here. Okay. Let me try to make it as big as I can.
Yeah.
Let's see. There we go. There's an icon at the bottom that looks kind of, yeah.
Yeah. Commissioner Feng, I'm going to start from the top.
Yeah, sure.
"Commissioner discussed providing opinions for additional residential development within the Valco Shopping District Special Area. The commissioners did not agree that a proposed amendment..." I think I would rephrase this, "could not come to an agreement," because it was not a unanimous, that we didn't, like, I would sort of rephrase it, it's not a, that, "did not agree" can also be interpreted as they agreed that we don't need it. So I would say, "could not come to an agreement." Would that be okay?
I don't have a problem with that.
A motion to approve General Plan Amendment GPA 200901 failed to carry 220. Feng and Takahashi voted no. Moore recused. A motion to approve General Plan Amendment GPA 201902 failed to carry 220. Feng, Takahashi voted no. Moore recused. Because the General Plan Amendments were not recommended, the municipal code amendment and master zoning amendment to implement the General Plan were not required, or should be, not recommended or not relevant?
They actually, yeah, they became moot because they enacted the general plan, so I did...
Okay. Where became moot, let's just say.
Yeah, if that's okay with council.
So, this language has been reviewed, and I would, my preference would be to leave it the way it is unless...
So, "were not required" is what you feel represents the best?
Yeah, that is sound as it is. Now, I would suggest leaving it the way, yeah.
Okay, thank you. "The planning commission discussed height limits across the site and economic feasibility of a project. Moved by Takahashi and seconded by Wong to adopt a draft resolution to recommend that the city council propose, adopt a proposed general plan amendment solely to establish a height limit of 60 feet for residential use only and 75 feet for residential use above commercial within the Valco Shopping District Special Area, and take such other actions as appropriate to establish these height limits within the Valco Shopping District Area. Subject to economic analysis and feasibility of development consistent with those general plan amendments, and subject to additional public engagement."
Right, so, that section really came from the feeling, at least on, I think we generally agreed the noticing was bare minimum, legal limit, versus expanded noticing for such an impactful project. That was the, I think, the discussion around additional public engagement.
Yeah, and this is, this is, the resolution is that we recommend this, so it's not like this becomes a requirement.
Yeah.
But it is, it is expressed, I think it expresses the desire of the commission.
So, when we say "subject to," does it become binding? Like, it has to be binding, or it is something, or like, what's the tone we want to convey there?
Well, the resolution, the resolution overall is a recommendation. The city council will have to adopt the resolution, that's my understanding.
And...
Well, they just take it as, they take it as a recommendation.
And I think, was the economic analysis part, were we thinking more about the office versus retail, or even for housing?
Even for housing, I think that the actual, the thrust, you know, because I, I kept pushing that pretty hard, the question was whether the height limit would cause the housing not to be, even the housing not to be viable.
Right, and my point on that discussion was, with any project, an economic analysis only makes sense from the standpoint of viability when you're talking about the mixed uses, especially when, you know, if, depending on the amount of below market, for example.
Yeah, so part of that intent was that there were, there were specific numbers there, limit of height, set, you know, the slope, slope line limitation, the number of developable acres in the mixed-use portion, those things all, all together, they, you know, there's a danger that those things create a, conditions which would not be developable.
Yeah, because, like, if I remember correctly, I think we wanted the council to do a recommended analysis, like, to also consider economic viability, but I'm not sure whether we wanted to say it should be subject to an economic analysis, or like, in the terms or the tone.
May I interject for a moment?
Sure.
So this, I want to caution the commissioners that this language is, you know, is what it is in the record, and we haven't, I would urge that we not make policy decisions about changing it at this point. It's not agendized as such.
Yeah, actually, one of the things that, one of the things early on was that there is, there was a notice that appeared in the Cupertino Courier last Friday for the August 20 council meeting, and that had a summary of...
September 20?
Excuse me?
August 20th, okay.
Yeah, it had a summary of our 7:30 decision, which I think was more accurate than what had appeared in the draft minutes. So actually, my first recommendation had been, perhaps we should just use that wording, but, you know, it's not, it wasn't exactly right because there was additional things attached to that.
The economic analysis discussion came about because of the fact that it was very specific that it was 13.1 or 13.2 acres of housing balanced commercial, and that was the genesis of that discussion, such that I felt it was necessary that there be some kind of economic analysis to ensure that we have a viable project.
Yeah, but we didn't pass those, so it all became down to what's the overall height requirement for that.
Well, but that's still, but that's still, you know, so one could argue if there was concern that the proposed general plan amendment would limit the amount of developable land too much, then that wouldn't have been an issue if you had, if you said the whole thing could be 65 or 75 feet over across the entire 50 acres, then that limit wouldn't be an issue, which you really need to, but for any, if you chose that method of any intermediate division, whether it be 13.1 acres, 15 acres, 17 acres, that would be what you would be looking at with the...
Yeah, I think all those discussions were moot because we decided we didn't have an agreement on voting on those. So finally, it came down to what should be the height limit for the housing in that area. And I think Commissioner Wang had mentioned that 60 feet is like five stories, if I remember correctly, and...
60 feet would be six residential stories.
Yeah, like, and...
Or four, four commercial stories.
Yeah, and...
So what's the wording you see? Because I specifically remember in the resolution requesting economic...
Would it help if I read the resolution to you?
Yes.
Because it is verbatim what was approved, and I, again, I don't think we should straighten...
I think that would settle the case, because...
Okay, great. Sorry, I do recommend that.
Especially Commissioner Wang is not here, so...
Right, and then the last change is an expansion. There are a couple places, including the legal notice, which refers to the second addendum, and just, in that shorthand for the full name which appears here, the, I think the critical, the operative part there was, this is a second addendum to the EIR, not, you know, the entire package of amendments. So this is just, this just basically makes that explicit.
Okay.
And, you know, I didn't, I didn't, I wasn't crazy about that, but that was, you know, that was a concession on my part, so.
Okay, so the operative language that four commissioners passed was, "The planning commission recommends that the city council adopt a proposed general plan amendment solely to establish a height limit of 60 feet for residential use only and 75 feet for residential use above commercial within the Valco Shopping District Special Area, subject to economic analysis of the feasibility of development consistent with those general plan amendments, and subject to additional public engagement."
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Wong had also had some notes about his own view, which was differing on the height limits. Was that, do we note them at the part of the minutes, or...
Well, both he and I did, but that would not be, those were not something we voted on, so that's not something that would be recorded in here. It's in the video, I mean, you know, it's in the video record.
Cool. All right, so Commissioner Takahashi, do you have any more comments on this?
No.
Commissioner Feng? Do we have a motion?
Sure. I move that we adopt the draft minutes of 7:30, 2019, with the changes that are on the computer, including the modification that was made during this discussion.
A second.
So, you need to help me start vote?
Start vote, yeah, there you go.
The motion passes 3-0.
Actually...
With Mr. Moore and...
Kitty shows abstain.
She's showing is absent, but that should be recused.
Can I request Commissioner Moore to join us back?
Yes, please, thank you.
Commissioner Moore, could you come and join us back on the forum? We, while Commissioner Moore walks back, we're going to start with the oral communications part of the meeting. If you, do we have...
Read that, too.
Were there any cards?
Not on the agenda.
There are no oral communication cards?
Never mind.
Okay, thank you. The stuff in the italics, that's for the oral or the written? Thank you. So, the oral communications, "This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the commission on any matter not on the agenda. Speakers are limited to three minutes. In most cases, state law will prohibit the commission from making any decision with respect to a matter not on the agenda." All right, so I have two, and I'm going to, one more coming. And the first speaker is Jennifer Griffin.
Hello, Planning Commission. I see, I got here late, but I see we're starting off now. I wanted to say how much I value the meetings with the Planning Commission. I feel like we're getting a lot of stuff done and covered and talked about. I find our Planning Commission very, very refreshing. I think that we have discussed items at the Planning Commission level that I've had questions about for a number of months now, and I feel very, very relieved that we've been able to discuss things, things that have been kept quiet, things that have happened at the state level, things that are happening to us, to Cupertino, not to San Francisco, not to, I mean, all we hear about in the news is Oakland, 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 San Francisco all the time, Berkeley, but everybody talks about bad Cupertino. If you live in Cupertino, you're awful, you're horrible. And I'm like, you know, it's really nice to be in my own city with my own Planning Commission, my city staff. I grew up in the county, so I didn't have a city. I had board of supervisors. They're good, but this is my city, my Planning Commission, and I'm really happy to be able to talk about things that we can't talk about, or are hushed up, or are taboo, or we're, because we're in Cupertino, people tell us, "Oh, you can't talk about that because you're so bad, you're so naughty, you guys are so stupid, you don't know how to run your own city." Well, you know, it's like, give me a break. You know, there's a lot of people that live in Santa Clara County that are not San Francisco County, or Alameda County, or wherever the heck Oakland is, and I really find it refreshing that my city can talk about anything that pertains to them, yea or nay, bad or good, whatever. And in my mind, that is where democracy begins, at home. There are some places in this world where democracy is being severely tested. We are also having democracy tested in our own state, and I will say again, we have it reiterated over and over again federally, because there are states' rights and their federal rights. I know that because my parent, my family came from Virginia, part of them, the other half are from California. So I can tell you, I value democracy. Democracy begins at home, and we are doing democracy right tonight in Cupertino. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker of our oral communication is Jim Moore. The next speaker we have is Jim Moore.
I'm a little confused on what I just witnessed as far as the deliberation during minutes. I thought the deliberation as far as the resolutions and that was done two weeks ago at the Planning Commission, and yet, myself and ones here sat through probably 15 minutes of deliberation as to what was really said two weeks ago, and what was really agreed to. And I, for one, have a little difficulty reading what was put up as far as changes, and I certainly will want to go ahead and get those and print those out, and then go back and view that part of the meeting, because having been here two weeks ago, I don't think that what was changed really fits what the record was, and we do have a video record on that. And so, that's a little confusing, that's disappointing, and it's disturbing that we now have deliberations during minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. We don't have any more of those lists for the oral communications part. We'll start, move on to the written communications.
Yeah, we received three sets of written communications, two of which are related to items on the agenda. The third one is a general comment regarding the Planning Commission meeting that was held on July 30th, and you have those in front of you. It'll be part of the record. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is a consent calendar. Unless there are separate discussions and/or actions requested by council staff or a member of the public, it is requested that the items under the consent calendar be acted on simultaneously. Do we have anything there?
No items on a consent.
Okay, thank you. We now are going to move on to the listed items on the agenda. I wanted to make one comment. We received a request to move item number four, which is the hillside exception earlier on. We discussed it with the staff, but we feel that once our agenda is published, we would like to maintain the order, because there are people who might be timing their visit to the, to this hall based on the order in which they are listed. So we did consider that, but we prefer to keep it that way. Sorry for the people who are going to be inconvenienced by that. So, I'm going to start on to subject number, item number two. The subject is, "Presentation from the city staff and consulted on green stormwater infrastructure, GSI, and the city's municipal region permit, MRP, requirement to adopt a long-term GSI plan. This is continued from the 23rd July Planning Commission, which was canceled."
We have staff from the environmental programs here today to present to you the project, or let them introduce themselves, and also the item. Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Sherri Donnelly. I'm part of the Public Works Environmental Staff for the city. This evening, I have our two consultants who will make a presentation on green infrastructure and allow you to, I think you received a document on our draft plan, and allow you to provide any input or comments that you might want to. So with that, I would like to introduce, next to me, we have Ashaka Attri. She is a senior environmental scientist at our program-wide consulting firm, which is EOA Incorporated, and this consulting firm is the project, program management for all of the Santa Clara agencies, which are, there are 15 in the Santa Clara program. Ashaka has over 16 years of consulting and project management experience with a focus on stormwater management, low-impact development, green stormwater infrastructure planning, public education, and integrated pest management. And integrated pest management is just safer, less toxic pest management. She's developed green stormwater infrastructure plans for several Santa Clara County municipalities, including the City of Cupertino's GSI draft plan. Leesbeth Magna, could you stand, please, is a senior scientist at EOA with more than 17 years of environmental consulting experience, both in the United States and Europe, in a wide range of service areas, and for various public and private clients. Leesbeth has provided guidance and assist... Lisbeth has provided guidance and assistance to various municipal agencies for their green infras, stormwater infrastructure planning and public outreach. Lisbeth has also worked on the city of Cupertino's green stormwater infrastructure plan. And with that, I'll turn it over to Ashaka to give the presentation. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Sherri. So I'll jump straight into the presentation. I'm going to talk about, oh, sorry, thank you. So I'm going to give a high-level overview of Cupertino's green stormwater infrastructure plan. To begin with, what is green stormwater infrastructure? Also, we sometimes call it green infrastructure, so GSI, GI, a couple of different acronyms that I'll be using during the presentation. These are systems that mimic nature and use vegetation, soil, natural processes to capture, treat, or infiltrate stormwater so that we reduce the amount of pollutants and runoff flowing into our creeks and then to the San Francisco Bay. So here's a little illustration explaining how green infrastructure works. On the right side, we have our traditional gray infrastructure. So as you can see, runoff and pollutants flow directly into storm drains. They flow over your roofs, your streets, paved areas into storm drains, and then straight to creeks without any treatment. On the left side is what, what is green infrastructure. So we are adding paved pervious areas, landscape areas, capturing runoff using rainwater harvesting, and overall reducing the quantity of pollutants flowing into local creeks. So this is definitely a more environmentally friendly way of urban, doing urban development. The focus of the city's and other agencies' green stormwater infrastructure planning is essentially to retrofit existing public streets, roofs, and parking lots to divert runoff to vegetated areas. So these are simply landscape areas that collect runoff and allow it to soak into the ground, to let it, let it flow into, onto pervious pavements, again infiltrated down to the ground, biotreatment areas, also called rain gardens, infiltration facilities, and rainwater collection systems. So since 2003, private and public projects over a certain size threshold, ten thousand square feet, have been required to implement low-impact development techniques, which are similar to what we are talking about here. So they have been implementing. Now we are kind of going above and beyond that requirement and looking for opportunities in all public, public lands to see where we can implement low-impact development. So that essentially is what GSI is. Just going over some of the features. The first, the top picture is bioretention areas. So these are landscape areas, usually near parking, parking lots or streets. They have curb cuts to collect runoff and then allow it to soak into the ground. They have engineered bio, it's called a biotreatment soil mix. So it's a mixture of compost and sand, which allows vegetation to grow and then the bacterial actions, along with the roots, treat stormwater runoff and reduce the amount of pollutants flowing out. Sometimes you also have, we call them as flow-through planters. These are placed next to, usually next to buildings, and they are concrete-lined. And they have an underdrain to collect runoff and after it's treated, it goes into the storm drain system. Similarly, we have green roofs. We don't see too many of these, but here are a couple of examples from downtown San Jose. And where space is limited, when you don't have enough space, for example, in parking lots or in medians, you can also divert runoff to tree trenches. So they allow, and these are modulars. So essentially, you're digging a big pit, putting biotreatment soil into it, planting a tree and allowing, capturing runoff and allowing it to get treated. Also pervious pavement is also being used. So there are generally two types of pervious pavements. One is you have pavers with gaps in between that let runoff soak into the ground, or you have instances where the pavers themselves are pervious and they let runoff soak in. Pervious concrete and pervious asphalt are also being used in Santa Clara Valley. And finally, we have rainwater harvesting. So a couple of examples here, there are big cisterns, which can be overground or sometimes placed underground. They capture runoff, which can be later used for other purposes. And the right side is just a small rainwater, rain barrel, which can be used in residential uses. GSI has many benefits. As I mentioned, pollutant reduction is one of the key ones that we are focusing on. It reduces the flow of runoff into creeks, preventing erosion. It helps reduce local flooding, overall urban greening, increasing wildlife habitat, helping with climate change. And if designed properly, GSI features can also improve bike and pedestrian safety. So many times, you have these bulbous where the GSI features are located. So they kind of provide a buffer for pedestrians or cyclists that are trying to cross the street. And that's one of the most common ways GSI is integrated into urban planning. In terms of regulatory requirements, as Sherri mentioned, the city is covered by the Municipal Regional Stormwater Permit, which applies to seventy, seventy-six Bay Area permities. So all of them around the Bay Area, these are in Alameda, Contra Costa, San Mateo, and Santa Clara. They have the same stormwater treatment requirements. And all of them are currently in the process of developing these long-term GSI plans. The San Francisco Bay Regional Water Quality Control Board regulates and implements the permit. And Cupertino and fourteen other agencies in Santa Clara Valley participate in SCVERP, Santa Clara Valley Urban Runoff Program, to achieve, to comply with the permit. So a lot of things that you will see in the GSI plan are being developed at the county level. So all the cities are, it's kind of a template that all the cities are following. And the, the GSI plan is due to the Water Board on September 30th. So the city has to submit an annual report to the board stating how it met the permit requirements. And in this year's annual report, the GSI plan will be included. And it's, it will be brought to the council for approval on September 3rd, 2019. In terms of what the commitments are and what the fiscal impact is, the permit is fairly prescriptive on what the GSI plan should include. First, it has to be submitted by September 2019. As part of GSI planning, the city has identified, prioritized, and mapped potential project areas where GSI features may be implemented over the long term. So we have to look up till, you know, from 2020 to 2040. So it's, it's a pretty long-term plan. And then you have to look at municipal plans, any other planning documents that you have, and make sure that all of them have similar language. So all your municipal plans are supporting implementation of GSI. You have to evaluate funding options, identify GSI opportunities in public projects, as I mentioned earlier, and then plan, and then track the implementation of progress, of projects over multiple years and report on implementation in the annual report each year. Currently, there's no current, there's no quantitative requirement that a city or a town has to implement X number of projects. That's not there. We're just planning and going to submit a plan to the board saying how this will be done over the next twenty years. So as I mentioned, you have to ensure compatibility with other city plans. So we've reviewed the city's various plans, including the gender plan, climate action plan, parks, master plan, bicycle plan. There's a whole list of plans here. I won't go through them. And environmental staff have been reviewing, have been incorporating language into the plans to make sure that they are compatible with the GSI requirements. So this process has been going on for a couple of years now. And what will happen going forward is that the city will annually review all the public projects that are in the CIP plan to see if GSI can be integrated into any of them. Then the lists and the reviewed projects have to be submitted to the board with annual report. And there's regional guidance, not just Santa Clara-wide, but Bay Area-wide, on how to identify GSI opportunities. So the city is following that guidance to identify these opportunities. Just a couple of examples. This is a local example of a green storm, green infrastructure opportunity. We kind of, it's kind of an extreme makeover project. This was, this is Hacienda Avenue in Campbell. The, as you can see, the road was not in good shape. They needed to repair it. There was a need for bike lanes, pedestrian access. So the, the city of Campbell applied for some grants and developed this street as a green street. So as you can see, it's, it's a big change. They have bike lanes, they have parking. And on the side are all the bioretention areas that capture runoff from the pavement and the street, so reduce the amount of pollutants generated by traffic and the street itself. This is just a close-up view of, of one of the bioretention areas. And then locally in Cupertino, the Stevens Creek Trail Project, the city used pervious concrete for that project. And currently, they have a demonstration project out at City Hall. So they replaced turf with rain gardens and mulch in the pathways. There's educational signage, which is really important so you get, make residents aware of what's going on and what's coming and how important it is to protect stormwater. And with that, we can take any questions or any input that you have on the plan.
Thank you for the presentation. Commissioners, now do you want to start with your questions? Commissioner Frank?
I noticed you had something written up, so. Yeah, so I'm curious, so one of the, you may not be familiar. One of the first places that people probably had seen bioretention areas were the swales here in the parking, the parking lot here for the library. I'm curious, relative, relative, you know, full implementation, I'm curious how big, how big those are relative to, you know, to a kind of a full implementation, you know? Is that, is that the size of, of the kind of bioretention areas you would expect for that parking lot or for this, you know, for this, the structures around here? Is it smaller or larger or?
So they can be. Bioretention areas are a little different from swales. The way swales were designed was that runoff would enter from one end, kind of flow out of the other end, and some of it will soak in. Bioretention areas are deeper, so you have to have ponding, the water ponds in and soaks in. So the surface area required would be smaller. So it's typically between three to four percent of the impervious area flowing into it.
Okay, great. Another question I'm curious about, you know, one of the things that is often mentioned, I mean, you know, the Mercury News is called the Mercury News because there's a lot of mercury in this, in the rock here. So I'm curious, what effect, you know, as you're trying to do things like reduce the amount of mercury that flows to the storm drains, what effect does the native environment, is that, is that a factor or is it a consideration in designing the GSI for this area?
So we're definitely looking at pollutant removal. So, not in Cupertino probably, but in other areas, you are trying, cities are trying to identify areas where they have, for example, high PCB concentrations. And they will place the area, the features over there. So they do remove pollutants that flow into them.
Yeah. And does that actually, I'm curious whether, in the thinking about this, whether that becomes an issue actually that, that contaminants may concentrate in the, you know, in the, in some of these features?
We've looked into it and generally found that to reach like a threshold that is of concern, it'll take like fifteen to twenty years. So it does not accumulate so quickly. And they are broken down, pollutants are broken down over time.
That, that actually was, one of the, one of my other questions was actually touching on, do these, do these kind of structures, you know, so the example of the street in Campbell is fantastic, as of course is our own, you know, McClellan Preserve. But I'm, I'm curious, is there a lifetime to these features? When you have these kind of, you know, soils that have a filtering effect, does that mean that at some point in the future that these things are going to be, need to be replaced, or is that?
They do have to be replaced, but what we've studied is like fifteen to twenty years of, that's the lifetime.
Okay. And then maybe the last question, we're related around, I'm curious whether, are there, are there grants and funding that help pay for these kinds of activities? I know the, the Public Works Department here is fantastic at finding opportunities to do qualifying projects.
Yes, so, so as, should I get into the stormwater research? So one of the things we did for the county was develop a stormwater resource plan, which identifies opportunities throughout the county, throughout the valley for GSI. And that stormwater resource plan includes a list of opportunities. And all those opportunities are eligible for future state bond funding. So that was a deliberate effort so that once cities find these opportunities, they can apply for grant funding.
That's great. I mean, you know, one of the, one of the challenges, we were fortunate here that financially, the city's in good shape to be able to do things like, you know, general rework of the roads and things. And, you know, of course, in many places, that would, that would be a challenge. And I guess my, my final question was actually, and, so I used to serve on the Parks and Rec Commission here during the time when we were approving the second phase of, of McClellan Preserve. So they, they actually did note at that time that the pervious concrete used on the pass was just quite, quite a lot more expensive. So I, one, one thing that I would, maybe I would have a comment is that there's, there's some mention of the financial impact of this. It seems like there may be, you know, it probably would be good to maybe quantify that, you know, the, the direct costs associated with, with those. I think, you know, because this is a region-wide thing, everybody's going to be doing it. But, you know, I think just as a, so that people can understand, you know, the, the scope and the involvement in making this, making this stuff happen, that would be great.
Thank you. Commissioner Takashi?
Yeah, a few questions. One is actually related, and that's with regard to costs. So, yes, pervious is definitely more expensive. So like in the case of McClellan Ranch, seems to me there might be easier, less costly methods to retain. Right, the concern is the runoff entering storm drains, right? And so it's a function of the area that's, that's paved, as well as the flow of, of that liquid. So it's a, whatever the slope is, and, so, and so in that McClellan Ranch path, I mean, it, it seems like the water would just naturally run off to the edges of, of the path. And I question the need for pervious, pervious there unless there's a clear area where, where it runs into potentially a street gutter and then into the storm drain. But then, you know, why couldn't we put a, a drainage there at the end? So, so really reinforcing, seems like a cost element should, should be generally assessed from the standpoint of, I think there's sufficient ways to do this. And just saying, we want all pervious pavement, I think, is not necessarily sometimes. It, sometimes it is, but, but sometimes it's not. The next one is areas not under city jurisdiction, Deans College, High School District, and, and Elementary School Districts. How does, how do we coordinate with them? I know that at least CUSD at, at the elementary, elementary school there, my home, did repave and, and put in stormwater retention. But I don't know if that's, you know, how that is being, how that's being managed. Is it just the district working with the state? Or can the, does the city also somehow weigh in? Because Deans, for example, is probably one of the biggest parking lots in the city, right? So that is a very large opportunity. So that, that's a question, I guess, is how do you, how do we convince Deans, which generally is, is an environmentally aware organization?
So currently, school districts, schools, community colleges, they are under the, when they redevelop their sites, they have to submit the plans to the state architect. And there is a requirement to do some amount of low-impact development. But there's a chance, and the, the Regional Water Board and the State Water Board are talking about this, that they will be folded into, when I say they, I mean the schools and the community colleges will be folded into what is called the Phase Two Stormwater Permit. So what the city of Cupertino has is a Phase One permit, which is for cities that are, that have more than ten thousand, population greater than ten thousand. So they will be folded into the Phase Two permits. And once that happens, they'll have similar requirements for LID and. -for LID and, you know, it'll offer more opportunities to collaborate-
Right, right.
-at that point.
Okay. Another question, in terms of the biolandscaping, is it generally landscaping that, that does need irrigation during the dry months, or is it seasonal, such that it browns during the dry months, and then, just from the standpoint of, that's another impact, that at least there needs to be awareness, right? We're going to be consuming more water, potentially, in areas that we weren't before.
So, as part of, so we are developing something called the GSI Handbook, which will have guidance on what kind of plants to use-
Okay.
-and we currently have similar guidance for the regulated projects, the private and public projects, that have ten thousand square feet, you know, that requirement. And it is recommended that you, that they plant native drought-tolerant plants. So, we're definitely looking at low-water-use plants for these features.
All right. And then the last question was, I, I think I heard you mention that there potentially is long-term periodic maintenance with regard to pollutant removal?
Yes.
Yes, so can you give me a little more detail about, so are there records kept in terms of, you know, how do we make sure that we actually come back and, and, and do that maintenance? And it sounds like a big job to me, to remove a lot of soil and, and replace it, almost a remediation, right? It's almost a hazardous material element. So, can you talk a little bit more about that?
So, the permit does have requirements for oper, for annual inspections of these features. So, the city is required to have, to maintain them and make sure they are functioning, the plants are healthy, and as part of that, they are required to maintain a record of these systems. So, currently, I don't think there's a requirement to actually monitor pollutants in the system, but, you know, as, as we move into the next permit, or as the city has more of these features, we could, this is something that could be considered.
Right, okay, thank you.
Commissioner Moore?
Good evening. I'd like to look at your slideshow a little bit, starting with, let's see, some of the, well, actually, going back to, to the reasoning that the GIS was implemented. So, it says to create healthier urban environments, and that's, a lot of things can fit in that. So, you've, you've got decreasing the, the requirement for your storm drain system. If, if we were to pave everything, basically, you're going to need some really huge pipes.
Yes.
Right. Okay, so there's, there's that aspect, and then there's cleaning the water before it even gets into the storm drain system, so that we are not polluting the bay. Okay, so, one thing I have a question about is flow-through planters. And when I look at that image, my concern is that it's next to the foundation of the house, and that, I'm wondering, when people have built these, have they had a problem with, you know, leakage into, into that, some sort of problems there, or how is that addressed?
So, the flow-through planters have concrete all around, and then a underdrain is placed above the treatment area. So, there's no, so, in fact, they are placed where, you know, treatment is required next to the building, so it doesn't flow into the foundation.
Okay, so this-
So, the bioretention areas are open, so you kind of tend, have to place them away from buildings, but flow-through planters are concrete on all sides, so there will not be any issue. There should not be any issue.
So, they're going to seal the side that's underneath the window there?
Yeah.
Okay, so, just thinking, you know, in the future, if we were going to ask homeowners or builders to, to be implementing this, when I look at all the water next to the, to the structure, I'm concerned about that. So, you're saying that they've had good, good luck with these?
Yes, and, and we have design guidance on how to design these, and they have been doing it for many years now, so-
Okay.
-definitely. They have to be designed correctly, that's definitely important.
Okay, so, in, in next slide, when I'm looking at the green roof, I'm curious about, you know, are they designing these for a ten-year storm, a hundred-year storm, and then a concern about the, the weight of the water that you're going to have, and how they're going to be draining this? So, I was wondering if you have some idea for how much water they plan on trying to retain on the roof?
So, all the features that are required by the permit are designed for two-year storms.
Two-year?
Yeah. So, kind of treat the first flush, that's, that's the intent.
Okay, great. And I'm glad to hear about the pervious pavement. I happen to have that for my driveway. And I really liked this, the bulb out that you showed. So, I've had kind of a pet wish is to have the California natives planted, and I'm not sure how some of them would handle the rainy season and being underwater. So, you've had to choose carefully a plant?
Yes.
Okay. So, is, it sounded like there is some effort to get to the California natives and-
Absolutely, yes.
Okay.
California natives, drought-tolerant, and then the, the low-water-use plant. So, we have specific guidance on, you know, what should be chosen for bioretention areas, what should be chosen for the flow-through planters. So, we have, as part of the countywide program, we do have guidance on plant selection.
Okay, so there could be some design where, towards the top, you know, you've got maybe things that bloom, your pollinator plants, and as you get lower down-
Yes.
Okay, you can have, have a different selection. And then I was a little curious about the, the mapping of sites, and if that, if, if that requirement due September third, or, or later?
It is for us, because that's when it's going to council, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay, okay. So, so when it says mapping, what, what exactly are you going to be bringing forth?
So, I don't know if the, the GSI plan was sent out?
It should have been, so, where's our-
So, again, as part of the stormwater resource plan, we did identify, we did a mapping exercise, and identified areas throughout the county, including the city of Cupertino, that would be suitable for locating these features. So, it was based on, you know, soil, soil conditions, slopes, and if we were looking at streets, what are the speeds? Because operation and maintenance becomes difficult if you, you know, you place them on roads with high speeds. So, that led to a mapping exercise, and the maps are included, included in the GSI plan.
Okay. Do, do we have a copy of those, of those maps, or? Okay.
I apologize. I thought that you received, I, I thought that the planning commission was sent these documents, and it may be that they didn't go out yet.
They're in the-
The zone, so it's not like, it's not like a actual, it's like the zones, it's not really a specific, like, it's going to be at this, you know, kind of like how we have housing element sites, it's not, it's not quite, it's not to that granularity.
There are specific parcels and specific streets.
Yeah, that other page was zones, but there, there are specific parcels that are potential, doesn't mean we have to do anything there.
Okay, okay.
One of the features in the stormwater resources plan was they identified Mary Avenue as a potential for something like Hacienda, where, because there were multiple benefits, the use of the area as a park, like a greenbelt, a running trail, a pollinator corridor, putting in divided, you know, bike lines, bike lane, pedestrian walks, having a tree canopy, you know, over to provide the shade, and narrowing the extra wide area. It doesn't mean we have to do it, it just meant that, you know, the consultants came out and walked it, and looked at it, and said, within the next twenty years, if you, you know, and the, the funding, we, we were kind of led to believe that there would be some grant funding for that kind of a project. There's also some pollutant in that area, of a little bit of the PCBs, that, so it would, like, you know, hit eight points.
Yes, and the, and if you can get the, the high tree canopy with the, the eighty-five there, that would be excellent.
Right, because there's so much sun and heat that if the cooling-
Oh, yeah, this, this is a really exciting location, actually, and if you can, anything similar to what they did to, on Hacienda, that, that was just a beautiful transformation that they did there. Okay, I think that's it for my questions, thank you.
And just for the public, the packet that Commissioner Moore is referencing is attached to the staff report under item number two. I think this attachment one and three, as well as the presentation slides, also attached as attachment number two.
Oh, thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I, I have a few more questions for you. I think the first thing I wanted to know was the cost and a benefit analysis in terms of the different approaches we have between concrete and the, the shadow things and so on. Are there guidelines published which actually compare how do different techniques perform both in terms of the initial investment and long-term maintenance?
We have provided some cost estimates in the stormwater resource plan, and we have some concepts in it on using different types of features for different projects, but I don't think we have a table that kind of compares all of them. But that's something, I guess, we could look into, yeah.
I think that would help everybody, including the city, to figure out where you get the maximum for their buck, because there are multiple options here, and as Commissioner Takahashi also mentioned, there can be ways of doing things which cost less but have the same effect. The other big thing which I had on a, a slightly macro perspective is the work which we do, apart from greening, want of Mary, how does it, or like, what percentage of the bad runoff will it stop compared to everything else we have out there? So, like, is there any study which says, okay, if we do these things, or we implement all of these, we will reduce the actual runoff of contaminants to the bay by, like, Y percent?
So, we are collecting data on all the projects that have been implemented so far, both private, public, and the idea is to come up with a number on, of, at least for the pollutant removal, and that can be translated into the volume treated also. So, that is, we are developing a database, and part of it will, will be a public-facing database, where people can also see what projects are implemented, and that, once it's completed, we should be able to come up with those numbers.
The other question I had was also sort of cost-related, excuse me, but, like, how does the, the special carved-out things and other things you put compare to normal landscaping? So, if we were just doing normal landscaping there, maybe putting some grass, putting some shelves, versus carving out these things and doing that, how much is the difference in the cost?
So, the problem with the, normal landscaping will not achieve that level of treatment that the permit wants us to do.
Okay.
So, you need-
Like, how much is the relative, is it like fifty percent more, a hundred percent more, two hundred percent more?
I don't have that information, sorry.
Okay, cool. And the last thing, and this is sort of a question, because we have these discussions in our family, is it okay to wash my car in the driveway? Because my children don't allow me ever to do it, and I have, I end up with a really dusty car, especially, I have an electric car now, so I don't even go to the gas station, so it's like really hard for me to get it washed. But what's the, what should we be doing here? And this is just for my education.
I just want to interject that when my teenager bought a car and couldn't afford to take it to a car wash, where that's all recycled water, I had him pull it up onto the lawn. Now, some people don't want it on the lawn, but the lawn survived. There might be a gravel area, or some contained area that is pervious, so it doesn't runoff, and especially if you're using soap suds.
Okay, so the answer is that-
You have great kids, by the way.
So, my kids are correct, is the answer?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I, I do have a question, so now that I'm in the map section, so, it's PDF sixty-five of ninety, and you have the city of Cupertino potential parcel-based GSI opportunities. Just a quick question, because you're showing the assessor parcel numbers, and the owner is city of Cupertino, and the current land use is park, open space. So, are these current parks that, that we have? And then, I guess my next question is this being tied into the Parks and Rec Master Plan? This is, there's, you're connected with that?
The Parks and Rec Master Plan has been, actually, Gail Seeds has been part of this plan, and we've had several meetings, she was part of identifying Mary Avenue. And so, the Parks and Rec draft, I want to make it clear that we're not jumping ahead and saying it's done, does include a lot of supportive language for green infrastructure. So, they're very closely aligned.
Okay, and then the first, first part of the question for these assessors parcel numbers, these are all, all parks existing, or, well, and I'm looking at Lawrence Midi Park, well, that one's kind of interesting, it says public buildings. I was wondering if, if you know what that is, actually?
Does that park have a public building in it, like a park building? So, it could have been, you know, because a lot of this was GIS-based desktop analysis, and it may have been captured as a public building if there's a, because otherwise it should have been just a park, not a public building, so we can look into-
That might be Sterling Barnhart, because it's so close to where the Lawrence Midi would be.
Okay, so at this point, do we, have we acquired Lawrence Midi Park to staff now?
To my knowledge, I had a meeting on it this morning, just with Public Works, and the status of every CIP project, and the Lawrence Midi project is delayed because, you know, we have to try and purchase the property, and there are several players, the county-
So, it hasn't happened yet?
...and another city.
Okay, okay, good. Okay, thank you.
And one that I'd missed, actually, one was a comment to Commissioner Takahashi that, I think, the, it's very true that the, the pervious sidewalk, or the pervious pathway at McClellan is, it may seem kind of superfluous, there was actually a consideration, I think there were special actions there, because that was part of the conversion to preserve, you know, being treated as preserved space rather than park space in town. And then, there was one item, and I think this, maybe this doesn't, doesn't really matter, one of the things that caught my eye in the work plan item, so this is from two years ago, there was, on page twenty-two, there was discussion about alternatives to so, to addressing GSI on your, on your own site. And so, one of the things was, was interesting to me, because one of those was a payment in lieu fee, that mentioned construction and maintenance of regional municipal stormwater treatment, although I, although it makes sense in some respects, given that this all costs some money, you know, I would hope that we'd be able to do something that would capture, you know, keep the in-lie fees that were collected here, you know, in town, just as a comment. And that, this is two years old, so, you know, you may have already addressed that.
Unfortunately, there still isn't a regional project where we could, yeah, so, I know a lot of cities and towns are interested in that, but nobody's really come up with a project that would satisfy this requirement.
I have another question, um, sir.
That is a great idea, and that is something that if we could identify one green infrastructure project, then we would have something for developers to pay into.
Right, well, I mean, that, that actually, you know, one of the things that wasn't proposed here was trying to have a, you know, GSI fund, in the same sense that we have, you know, affordable housing fund, or, you know, traffic impact fees. So, that, you know, there clearly is going to be costs, and there are clearly going to be impacts in town, so, you know, if there was a mechanism through which the in-lie fees that were taken, you know, that were paid here, were kept in town, that would be, I don't think anybody would have a problem with that.
We could note that, because the council specifically wanted the planning commission's input, and if that were one of the comments, that would be, I think, beneficial.
I'm, I'm kind of curious, so if we did acquire Lawrence Midi, would we be in a position to, you know, provide some of these retention, the, the bioretention swales there for? Because that's, you know, you've got, like, four lanes of traffic that you could potentially capture some of the runoff from?
Yes, exactly. This is what staff has been talking about. We are required- We are required by this permit, that we showed you earlier, to review every CIP project once a year and say either that we will consider a way to put green infrastructure in it or that it's not feasible for some reason. Like the bike paths on McClellan, there is not enough space to add in green infrastructure. But Lawrence Midi was identified that if we could jump all the hurdles and get the land, that that would be a great opportunity. Like you say, it would treat, you know, the better pollutant loads. That's very astute, yes.
I had a question about the ten thousand square foot rule. Does it apply to private developments also?
Yes, private and public, but not, single family is exempt. It's currently all other private and public development.
Okay, thank you. If we don't have, go ahead.
Well, I'm kind of wondering about getting, receiving some outside funding, is there, you know, like would the Lawrence Midi project be large enough or would it need to be even, you know, bigger like the Mary Avenue? And were you, when you mentioned funding to, to pay into from the developers, are, does it need to be like a single project or can it be like, you know, we're going to do the whole, I, I think Commissioner Fung was touching on this, can we have just, just like a, you know, a whole account basically and then we distribute it to the different projects? And then there is another concern and that's, there is going to be like widening on Wolf Road at some point and, you know, I'd like to see if that's not already in the plan to see how that can be added in, because there, there were going to be frontage roads which I think give us a lot of opportunity for those bioretention swales to go in there. And I don't recall seeing it in the previous plan, but it might have been, I'm not sure.
I don't think we've identified.
No.
Yeah.
It's not in there yet, but we could try and make a note.
Okay, if the commissioners don't have any more questions, I'm going to open it for public comments. We have one speaker here, one card here, Lisa Warren.
So these things make me very happy. I hope they can work, but I do have, I have some concerns. There was a comment about the planning for this type of thing has been going on for a couple of years. Has anything been presented to public, I mean, to planning commissioners or city council up to this point?
We actually don't have, we've been doing a lot of planning and thinking how to implement this mandate, but we don't really have a project other than, for example, the Stevens Creek Restoration Project is a perfect example of green stormwater infrastructure, so it was already done before this was a mandate.
Lisa, there, there have been some projects that have come through that, that have adopted, like Target, I believe, had a pretty strong stormwater retention element. So I think it's been just by project as opposed to...
Okay.
Well, Apple Park did the same.
Because there, there were excellent questions from all of you and I, many of them were my questions, but more than my questions, so thank you for that. But I feel like these questions should have been asked prior to now if in three weeks council's voting on something. I, anyway, and I also wonder, a lot of this is based on assuming we're going to have rain. If we continue to have drought years and extended drought years, my guess, my assumption is that the plantings would have to be different, the strategies may need to be different, and I don't know if that's been part of the discussion. And there's a list of things for people to choose that are, you know, this is optimal if, if we're really not going to have any rain, because I, I don't know, I just, I have a million questions and I wish that, that there'd been an opportunity for the public to input, because doing it this way doesn't work. I'm not even supposed to be asking questions, I'm just supposed to be talking. So I, I think it's a great opportunity, but I'm a little saddened by lack of information until this point when in three weeks there has to be some, and it's a twenty-year plan. Sorry.
It's, it was, it was a concern of ours too, however, it, it's a mandate with a template, it's, it's a little different when we bring up...
Okay, no, I, I get that part of it, yeah. And then, do the, does the mandate require you to consider projects that have been approved and not built and where these things can go? Because Commissioner Moore mentioned that, you know, there may be streets that are widened, there may be streets that are narrowed, and there was a particular project already that Apple's doing, the bike lanes, the divided bike lanes between Wolf and Tantow. Some of the pictures shown by Public Works were with the green divider and it was great, only when I said, those other pictures not so great, the green is great, oh, it's too expensive, we can't irrigate, we're not going to do it. I mean, this is an opportunity to do that and you're getting money from Apple, why don't you ask and put a little more money in so you can do it? Or is it a room problem? Is there no room to do it?
We did go over the proposed, or the projects today, I'm sorry.
Go ahead. I think what, this is meant for comments and...
Yeah, I know. Okay, so that, so my comment would be, I, maybe you could revisit what's already planned and I'm also wondering what about the bollards that are already in the street, are those test bollards for that project or those them?
Okay, yeah, thank you, Lisa.
They're not good.
We don't have any more public comments or we, could, do you have blue card?
She can do it after.
Okay.
I just, I wasn't going to speak, but Lisa brought up some interesting points. I'm glad to hear the Lawrence Midi Park mentioned. I mean, I know the money has been given to the city, it's sitting there, and it, we will prevail. I know there's multiple entities that, if you got, okay, Steve Jobs was able to purchase what they did, sixty-five land purchases to get the Apple to campus, or I think it was twenty-five or sixty-five. We will prevail because there's about that many to get the Lawrence Midi property, but we're, you know, I'm glad everybody's still working on it. The money is there and no one else can get the land, it's got to go to Cupertino. But I think it's a very interesting area to have the swales because you're right next to the creek and then you do have adventures in Lawrence Expressway, you know, there's still a lot of, I guess right now on the Lawrence Midi property, there's a bunch of like, like, I don't know if they're the sewer drains, there's, somebody's using it to store a lot of like, they look like concrete sewer, I don't know what they're doing over there, but I guess the county's using it or whoever owns it, so that's fine. But I will just say, in the situation of the ball, bollard land on Stevens Creek Boulevard, okay, I, you know, between Tantow and Wolf, I think I had said before, I was like, oh my God, where are we going with this? But I can see the bollards are out there, I, I understand this is sort of like a test procedure because it, it's, believe me, when you have schools start next week next to Cupertino High School, you have the, the kids going in and out of the road there to get, off of Stevens Creek to get to the high school and then you've got a bus stop that is totally loaded that's around the corner, that is going to be the ultimate test. I think the problem on Stevens Creek was that there is no room. You can't, we will not allow, the neighborhood will not allow any of the public, the thirty-five foot Heart of the City right-of-way to be sacrificed for anything. We fought for nine years to keep that intact during the main street. You can go back and look at the years we spent to get that right-of-way, to get the trees there. I have been looking at that empty lot since the mid-eighties and, you know, if I keeled over today, the fact that we've got a double row of trees down there is one thing I have achieved in my life. It is a constant battle to keep those ashes up on Tantow and Stevens Creek and we need to be sensitive to the fact that there are people in the neighborhood that have spent ten years fighting to keep that public right-of-way, and I know Public Works knows that. So yeah, if the bollards are going to work, okay, that's great, that's fine, but I think the problem is lack of land and believe me, if that BRT comes blasting in from San Jose from the east, they're going to try to take over Stevens Creek.
And could you also fill in a card?
There's no room, yeah.
Can you, thank you. Do we have any more cards and speakers on this topic? No, thank you. So at this time, we close the public comment on this subject. I guess we are done on deliberations on this and we can move on to the next topic now.
So I, just a couple of comments. I think responsive to the oral communication, I think that in general, projects, projects that have gained approval have, have vested rights, so would not be subject to new legislation. There are actually, I think, there have been a number of projects that have a number of these kind of green features. Target was mentioned, of course, you cited Apple Park in the, in the, you know, in your report, and I think you, we've been saying, you know, public storage had, had retention areas as well. So, you know, I actually wanted to thank staff for doing a great job of encouraging, you know, encouraging projects that are coming through to consider having these kind of features, you know, in advance of the legislation. And then I finally, I just wanted to say, I, it was, I, I found this to be a really interesting packet, a lot of, a lot of great stuff there and I really, you know, look forward to it becoming part, part of what we're doing here and, you know, to have, you know, a lot of success with the, with the projects.
Thank you. Commissioner Moore?
Thank you.
Yes, I'd like to, with regards to the projects that are approved, comment, the Wolf Road was not approved, so I, I don't believe that that is off the table, so I, I still would suggest you look into that for the bioretention areas. And I just kind of have a question, cost-wise, looking at Heart of the City, are you, are you finding that there's areas that are, that are retrofitting landscaping or is it, you just basically, if you have an area that's got your classic green grass, the raised curbs and then, and trees, are you basically needing to wait for the, the life of the tree to end? And then at that point, you can go back and create the bioretention areas where you're essentially going to have to trench out the whole area between, you know, you've got your classic curb, parkway, sidewalk, okay? And then if you want to convert that to a bioretention area, you're going to have to do a lot of curb cuts, if it, dig out all the soil, get, you know, trees, tree roots, and then redo the whole area. It sounds very expensive. So have you had some areas, some parts of the Silicon Valley that are doing that or is it just, or, or do you target areas which maybe, you know, maybe there were unincorporated county areas and they didn't have the sidewalk, that type of thing?
I think generally people are, cities are looking at projects that are in the CIP plan, so, you know, they are going to do something with, something is coming up, a public project is in the works and that's when you look for opportunities. That, that's how the process has been so far. I don't think anyone has kind of deliberately gone and created a bioretention area. It's, when a project is happening, is there an opportunity? Can we do something to treat stormwater? So that's been the process so far.
I just wanted to add something briefly and that is that the Deans and Medians, even though it's not actual green stormwater infrastructure, because we don't have curb cuts that treat the street, the runoff from the street, we took mounds that were compacted and they became concave so that they hold the water better and, you know, I drive that road to get to work and I'm, it's one of my favorite projects, even though it's not treating the street, it's a step in the right direction and that would be an example of more retrofitting rather than creating.
Yeah, I would also like to thank the staff for putting together a very good package and, and report and with a lot of good illustrations. Pictures worth a thousand words, right? So, and it, it would be interesting in the future to see if there can be things done to promote more retroactive elements, because we're pretty built out, so projects moving forward are relatively limited and if it is like other projects, like, like sidewalks in unincorporated areas, they're done lot by lot, done permit by permit, so it's definitely very painstaking, but some, some kind of incentive to, to potentially, for, for somebody to do good, I guess, would, would be an interesting element.
Yeah, thank you. Alan? Yeah, to, to add to what other commissioners have said, I think more education on how anybody who's landscaping can help, help retain the water and help reduce the flow would be useful. I think, as I talked in my, I mentioned in my questions, love to hear more about the trade-off between different approaches, what costs they have and so on. And I think those are the two big things, more education and relative cost analysis to help incorporate whatever they can incorporate based on their budget. Thank you.
I'm kind of wondering if there was some analysis about the, with regards to the storm drains, if, if there's a reduction in infrastructure cost that can be, you know, demonstrated to people, because you're, you're essentially building a whole network of detention ponds, which, you know, I'm sure the hydrologists are having a good time with that, trying to work their calculations, because it gets pretty complicated and they don't really know what would, what would be happening. You know, if you, each city starts really implementing this, you could really be making a very complicated flow pattern. So anyway, I was wondering, you know, if, if, I think it might help when you talk to the cities, if you had something to say, you know, this is the cost savings that you're going to have. And it could be that, that our storm water perhaps currently needs to be treated before it gets to the bay and there's like, you know, a treatment plant that we are avoiding having because we're, we're going to this effort, or we don't have to trench the streets and, you know, put in new RCP and we're, we're happy about that. So I'm, I'm all for this, I think it's, it's excellent and thank you for your presentation.
All right, thank the commissioners and thank you, staff.
Thank you.